Okay, so we're gonna call this November eleventh, uh, business meeting to board. Um, is there someone who would like to lead us in a pledge of?
United States and two republics, which is one nation, their god.
Uh, are there any revisions to the agenda you think? Public comments. This item is the appropriate place to make comments about an item, not on the agenda, but within the board's jurisdiction. In order to protect individual rights of privacy, avoid comments that identify students or staff members. Additionally, a public comment cannot be used to make comments regarding contested cases, grievances, or legal proceedings. Uh, due to open meeting laws, the board cannot respond in any way to comments made during the public comment period. Uh, and it looks like we do have a public comments tonight if I may see. Uh, come on up and then I'll just a reminder, we're two minutes. So we are, we have to time a two minute timer.
I will do, I will time and give us like a ten second form.
Go first?
Yeah, you're right.
All right, I'm up. Here we go. All right.
I'll leave it in.
Get that hook ready. Right, here you go. All right, beautiful people. I'm overdue, actually. You know, I had promised I'd be back in September. Sadly, with the legislative update about the even genitals, what they were doing and affecting school, I'm not doing that tonight. Just press for time and I'm in a really good mood. Okay, I really, I said, I have a lot of good things to share. So music. Oh, my gosh, I went to that joint band extravaganza. Wow, that high school band guy. Unbelievable, just super, super rapport with the great and McCready, of course, that's not, that's not new. Awesome, awesome. So kudos, beautiful. It was just such a great evening. Awesome. Um, second, singing praises, singing in the musical vein there, um, speech and debate. Is she here? Okay, so I judged, which I did seventeen years. Amazing. This was the best. Oh, my gosh, it went so smoothly. The tamarack, whatever the title was. Sarah, Sarah, um, please pass. It was amazing. Well run. Um, extra kudos to food services because I had to message her. Who provided this pasta salad and Caesar salad extraordinary? Because I've had all kinds of food over the, that was so, she said, that's our, I said, so kudos to them. So let's see, I praised the music, I praised food service and Sarah and everybody involved in the speech and debate, um, meet. Oh, I know what. Dave, because I looked at the agenda, I was kind of like scrolling through online, Dave. I saw, this is like your official whatever, okay? So I just want to tell everybody here, in all the years I've known Dave, he and I go way back, right? Care board, other stuff. I have only had one issue with Dave on a decision that he made. And Dave, I have to tell you, because you know, I'm honest and I'm upfront, it turned out to be the best decision that you made for me in not for me, because I've had the best, this is my final year. And so thank you, Dave, and really good luck to you. Enjoy your retirement. You deserve it and all that good stuff. Thank you, beautiful people. Keep doing the awesome work you're doing. And I will see you again when we have time because I do have an issue to discuss, but I'm in a good mood. We had Veterans Day Assembly today. Nothing like seeing kindergartners singing their hearts out if they're not crying or exploring their parts and whatever. So it was awesome. So thanks all. Thank you. All right, yay. Love it. Love it.
All right, so we will move as all the public correspondence I had tonight. So, uh, or sorry, public comment. Public correspondence, there's a letter attached, so I think everyone's had a chance to look at that. Um, and then we will move on to F, which is the approval of minutes. Are there any clarifying questions on that?
I can just abstain from all of these. I was on the work team, so I could abstain from putting on all of them, but I'm gonna bring it up to the group.
And I broke it up in the agenda, so that we can start. Because lately, we've been having those issues when we had to remove to break it into pieces. So that's how difficult it makes it today.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I'll move that we approve the October fourteenth. Second. Thanks, and that's approved by Katie, seconded by Quincy, all in favor. Okay, thank you. And then I'll move that we approved October twenty eighth minutes.
Second.
Okay, moved by Katie, seconded by Rainey, all in favor. And everybody back. And the last, just so you don't change name, I'll move that we approve the October twenty eighth special meeting next. Second. Moved by Katie, seconded by Quincy, all in favor. Thank you. All right, moving on to G, which is our student trustee reports with Carmella, you are up.
No. All right, um, I will start with the high school. So fall activities are coming to a wrap. Volleyball divisionals just happened this last Thursday through Friday. They played Frenchtown first, who was first in the seed on Thursday, and then Dylan, and their season ended on Friday. Um, football won against Laurel, which is taking them, oh, I'm sorry. Football won against Frenchtown, which is taking them to the semifinals and oh, I'm sorry, I switched up again. Football won against Laurel, which takes them to the semifinals, and then they were playing Frenchtown on Friday. And you'll get about that one. Um, speech and debate, they had a meet at Whitefish on Saturday. And I think it was also in the mall down too, but over twenty schools attended, which was pretty cool. And what I've heard, it was a pretty long night. Um, entertainment is starting up, Midsummer Night's Dream. Put on by the Drama Club and Director April Williams is the main, I think, school performances on Wednesday. And then Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night at seven P M. Opening shows. Let's see, um, for general outstanding first quarter across the school. Each grade level has a team that analyzes student achievement and identifies students and needs of intervention or student support. And it focuses more to that end of the order area. Um, something new that's been happening with the school are startup of some recognition programs. One called Unsum Heroes, where staff will identify five students attending Whitefish High School, um, grade wide. And they will be awarded for their good doing around the school. This award is honored to students who are noticed for making significant improvements and giving great things back to the school. And there's a little ceremony that's held, which they will receive recognition and a little, I think some sort of tree or something at the chessroom. And then another award is the top dog award, which is for teachers. Staff members are identified for going above and beyond this support of the school. And each, I, each top dog will be identified every month. And the former top dog will identify and nominate the new top dog and get a little dog for their desk. These pro, these are great programs. So I will give thanks to the people who make the Whitefish High School the amazing place that it is. And we'll quote from Mr. Drown, "That which gets recognized gets repeated." Very true. All right, early applications are just coming to a close as well. So seniors had a pretty busy week about two weeks ago. And they're working hard. And then we have parent teacher conferences, which happened last week, over three hundred conferences held at the Whitefish High School. Fifty percent of those were freshmen, thirty were sophomores. Ten of each juniors and seniors also. Staff feedback helps with the intervention and supports of students that hold out and what. Veterans Day was also held today, and in my opinion, it was a great success. There was a lot of amazing people that were speaking and just there to support veterans. Um, it's ran organized by Student Council with the help of hospitality and co-hairy, as well as our student council advisor, Mr. Rotten, so. Helps see student, it helps students see our world from a broader perspective and honor to that better and educates further generations. And now we are going to the middle school, which is reported by the new Trey Weller. Um, Whitefish Middle School has made it through the first quarter of school with a lot of fun moments and a lot of fun day. On Friday, October tenth. The entire school participated in the Montana Crunch Pop event. Sponsored by the W S C Team Services. Whitefish Middle School Student Council is sponsoring a fundraiser for the North Valley Food Bank.
Pardon me for interrupting.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay, sorry, guys. The fifth and sixth graders will be competing in a penny war. The seventh and eighth graders can contribute through the break of book fundraiser. And every book that is donated earns a raffle ticket. There will be multiple prizes that students can win. All money raised goes directly to the North Valley Food Bank. As reported last month, the Whitefish Middle School Student Council has hosted the annual Whitefish Middle School Halloween Dance. The seventh and eighth graders had a chance to try out their costumes prior to Halloween. And the dance entertained two hundred and fifty-five seventh and eighth graders. That is seventy-six percent of the seventh and eighth grades to body. Great turnout with a lot of fun had by all. The sixth, seventh, and eighth grade bands have had their first concert, very successful with some great sounding music. Our Whitefish Middle School musicians rock. The entire Whitefish Middle School actively participated in Halloween on Friday, October thirty first. Students came dressed in costumes as well as staff, and it was a fun day for a bunch of people. We have twenty-six total seventh graders out of twenty-four total eighth graders. And then this is what is happening there. Mall down. Halloween was a huge success. Students and staff alike participated in the festival. Staff chose a theme for their respective members. It was a great, it was gracious to see everyone participate and have fun. They had parent teacher conferences on November sixth and seventh. Conferences were all, were well attended. And the trimester ends November twenty fifth. Reports will be sent home.
Thank you. Thanks. Any questions or? Is there a bus ride to Frenchtown?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
And they're taking cheerleaders and students who want to sign up.
Our part is Frenchtown.
It's right before Missoula.
Turn off for Missoula, then so, yeah.
Better than Laurel.
All right, uh, so we move on. Thank you, Carmella, very much to a W E A or W C A updates. Okay, so moving into discussion. For, uh, we will move into agenda item A with Upper Seven Law and Unweave, uh, over.
I'm sorry, I didn't just lost.
All right, I'll let you introduce them.
So we have representatives from Upper Seven Law to present information about school funding. Andre, are you available?
I am here. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. If, if you can't hear me while I'm jabbering on, raise your hand. I can, I can see you. I know you all can't see me. Thank you all so much for having me. Thank you for letting me zoom in this evening. I'm actually down in Stevensville. I'm about to talk to your counterparts, um, on the Stevensville, uh, school board as well this evening. Um, as the superintendent said, my name is Andres Halliday. I am a staff attorney at Upper Seven Law in Helena, Montana. And I think the reason that, uh, we've been invited to come speak to you and your peer groups across the state is that you may have seen in the last month or two that the Missoula, um, school district trustees um, approved moving forward with a potential school funding lawsuit. And so what do I mean by a school funding lawsuit? And I apologize if some of this is repeat for some of you. We'll start with Montana Constitution, right? And the Montana Constitution says that the legislature needs to provide uh, adequate funding, its share for you all, the local districts, to provide a basic system of free quality, public, elementary, and secondary schools. Right? So there's an obligation on the part of the state to give you guys enough money to create a quality education system. The second piece of it is that the state has to fund that system equitably. Meaning you've got to make sure that resources are spread correctly, given the vast differences in the rural and urban and distance nature of our state. So you've got in a quality function with enough funds to fund that quality education, an equitable system um, on how the state should be funding that education. So how's that played out historically? Back in the nineteen eighties, there was a case called Helena Elementary. And that case dealt with the equity piece. Um, in, in a, in the simplest form.
Were getting richer and the poor were getting poorer. Districts that had a lot of public land districts that didn't have large tax bases were finding themselves unable to provide programming, um, and basic necessities for their classrooms. Um, meanwhile, a lot of more urban districts, districts that had, uh, extensive commercial uh, more industrial or, uh, operations were able to afford significantly more opportunities for their students, right? So where you were born dictated the quality of the education and the equity of that education funding that, that children received. So the outcome of Helena Elementary found a way to better share resources, um, and the simplest, the way to think of it is, in a lot of the G T B funds or the funds that the state provides to get districts up to what we think of as base today, um, shook out of that, uh, lawsuit. Uh, there was another lawsuit in two thousand and five called Columbia Falls. And that case dealt more with whether or not the state was providing sufficient funds for that quality education. The district court there said, well, we do have a problem here because the state hasn't defined what a quality education is. So the state went back to the drawing board and used some guidance from the district court. And it defined, uh, about eight items, um, that constitute the basic system of free quality public, uh, education in the state of Montana. Those are curriculum, um, and accreditation standards. Students with special needs like at-risk students, students with limited English proficiency. Um, children with disabilities, gifted and talented students. Elements like Indian education for all. Uh, qualified and effective teachers and administrators to provide this basic system of quality education. Facilities and technology. Transportation of your students. Um, procedures to assess and track student achievement and preserving local control of school boards like yourselves. So coming away from the Columbia Falls case, the legislature sat down and it created a, a, a funding mechanism that you largely all experience today when you all are setting your budget. And incorporating that with the base and max funding systems that I'm guessing most of you are aware of. We have the system that we have today. That's a lot of jargon. One thought experiment I like to tell people to think about is, um, think about your school funding today. Think about, uh, what you're providing. Think about what you're struggling to provide. Think of the things you wish you could provide more of. Whether that's programming or paying your teachers more or socking away money for, um, capital improvements or major maintenance needs. And now think about whether you could provide all of the programming you're providing today and plan for those future needs with the eighty percent base level that the state, uh, provides. Because that eighty percent base level is what is supposed to be capable of providing all of those elements that the state defines in statute as a basic system of free quality, public, elementary, and secondary schools. And it appears to be getting harder and harder for most districts in this state to provide, uh, those services. And that's usually evidenced by use of other budgeted funds like, um, bonding. Asking your taxpayers to build, um, and debt servicing those bonds. Your major maintenance or school reserve levy funds, your transportation funds, your tuition funds. Right? All of these other funds that you have to go out and ask your local taxpayers to fund. Because not enough money comes in from the state chair. And that gets back to the problem of equity. Maybe you're fortunate enough, and I, I think you have been in Whitefish, which is fantastic of your electorate to approve operational levies or technology levies or, um, capital needs. Some places can't. And that's exactly where we were, you know, almost forty years ago in Helen Elementary, where some districts simply couldn't get enough money and other districts found themselves relying too much on requiring their local taxpayers. So, um, we're, we're hitting a point, we believe, this Missoula School District believes, where the, the state is no longer providing sufficient funding. Right? So that state, so that school districts can provide that basic system of free quality, elementary, and secondary education. And those funds aren't being distributed in an equitable manner. Where once again, we aren't slipping into a situation where children in the state of Montana don't have their educational opportunities and outcomes dictated by which locality, which school district boundaries they were born into. So we're going around sharing this information, talking to school boards, seeing what questions they have. Um, hoping that they are interested potentially in signing on in the future, um, participating as an informational, um, body that provides access to, um, sharing your stories, right? Sharing, sharing what's working for you, what's not working for you. So that we can ultimately put together, um, um, an argument if and when it comes time to file a, a school funding lawsuit. That was a lot of information, and, um, I'd love to know what questions you have for me.
Andres, my name is Dorsey Schaller, uh, and I have a question. I actually wrote an article or letters to the editor op ed, um, last fall. Kind of talking what you're talking about, and I think a couple of your colleagues actually from Upper Seven Law reached out, and we had a conference. My question is, is why now, when the legislature is forced to look at the funding and there's already a lot of momentum happening with funding? So I'm wondering if this lawsuit, this publicity is taken away from possibly what um, is happening through other lobbying groups and legislative actions? So I'm curious about the timing.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a wonderful question, and we hear that a lot. Um, there, there's a couple of reasons why, um, I think there's a value in a lawsuit. We think there's a value in a lawsuit now. The, the first is that it helps focus, right, the discussions of funding and what a system should look like on
Oh, we lost you.
Oh, no, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, yes.
Oh, no, okay. Sorry. So, yeah, so, yeah, great, great question. I don't know why my headphones went out. The beauty of our technology, um. Uh, the, so it's, um, I don't know where I dropped off, but we, we think that there's a couple of reasons why. The first is that having a lawsuit that focuses the issues, that explains the problems in the system existing today and pointing out where there are gaps existing today, actually hyper focuses, right, those funding discussions going forward. The, the committee has a, um, horribly truncated, and it's not their fault, it's the design of our system. Timeline for how they're supposed to both analyze the current, uh, shape of Montana's educational system as a whole, putting aside funding. And then also make determinations regarding, uh, should they do a cost study? What should, should they change the funding of the system? Should funding be increased? Should new areas be added in? I think a, a lawsuit traveling in tandem with that is extremely helpful in saying here are the one, two, three, four, eight areas where right now things are just deficient, um, across, across the board. The second piece of that is the, if any of you are, have been involved in the painfully slow-moving nature of civil litigation. When the Columbia Falls lawsuit started, um, it was in about two thousand and two, I believe. It finally laid its head to rest in about two thousand and eight. The Montana Supreme Court decision came in in two thousand and five. So you had about three plus years between the inception of litigation and the actual decision by the Montana Supreme Court that then prompted legislative action following on that. I was just at an education law conference and one of my colleagues was telling me about their Arizona case recently that had begun in two thousand and seventeen. They've went to trial in two thousand and twenty-four and they got a decision from the court, um, a couple of months ago in two thousand and twenty-five. These cases move slow, getting them parked in place with, right, the information that this committee needs right now to think about, um, is, is the time to do it because we'll be heading into a legislative session, um, really a year from now, which is kind of wild to think about. And ultimately know by May of the following year whether sufficient actions have been taken by the legislature to cure, right, the constitutional deficiencies. Likely to let the lawsuit itself would remain dormant for some period of that time while you wait and solve what the legislature did. But if you wait until after the legislature, right, after the committee is done with all of its recommendations, um, to, uh, proceed. What you do is just set yourself on essentially another two-year timeline. So if you start in two thousand and twenty-seven, you're looking at more like a two thousand and twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-thirty, which is, um, wild, wild to think about in terms of, um, it being two thousand and twenty-five today. So that's why thi- this, this makes more sense to do right now in our mind. Timing wise.
So you're kind of like looking at the calendar and working your way backwards.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that, that's a, that's a great description of it. And also if the legislature does ultimately appropriate, right, sufficient funds to cure the deficiencies, um, cases will go away, right? That's what happened in the wake of both Columbia Falls and Helen Elementary. The legislature stepped in, took the necessary steps, um, and a court said, uh, you know, your lawsuit no longer has legs because there's sufficient funding, right, or there's equitable funding at this point. The legislature fixed the problems, which is, I, I think what you all would want.
Thank you. Thanks for answering that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or any other question? Thank you for explaining the background.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Well, thank you all. Um, we're happy to answer any more questions. If you guys want to have any continued discussions, please let the superintendent know and um, we can keep the conversation going.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andres.
Thanks. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Just, and Dave and, um, so is this saying that this first money funds needs to be further evaluated, um, the amount that I need sent from legislature? For example, and we have an H R department now, chairperson. It seems to me we should have been able to have enough funding to have had one more now. And the only way we got funding to have it now is because of Lucy's magic with the budget.
And penny pension.
I mean, so when we feel, or this is right now, I'm going to discuss it. We are in relation to the question ship, the questions that Andres brought up as far as are we adequately funded to provide quality education? And we're lucky because our bond passed, and so we're doing physical changes, but where are we budget wise?
That's a lot of, no, that's a day to get.
I think it's, it's a really good question and speak to that too, right? With the funding we receive, we are very fortunate in our community. It's important for our letters, um, have passed and supported our simple district services here. The level that's, that's helpful to our, to our community, our students. Whether that's adequate and fair and equitable, or those are all questions, I think. Conversation, discussion.
Is, are they meeting, is the legislature meeting at constitutional requirements?
Well, I would, I always think, there's one component of education development solely unfunded and then it always has. a special function. We do not receive the funds necessarily to support that those programs through the federal government, not those in the state to, to school districts. So if there is one area that I was to point to just tonight, you know, that would be one area that is not adequate.
I think the other way to think about is what he said there. Imagine we had to do all of this for eighty percent.
Right.
Which most
That's what I was gonna say, because that's what we're really talking about, guys. That's all around that eighty percent is.
Yeah, they're, they're claiming that eighty percent is enough to fund education. And everybody except for certain legislators, no, that's wrong.
And that's where I think of HR as support in the administration staff. Grossly unfinished, you know, and I'm sure they don't, them as aligning.
Our teachers like that's.
I'm sorry, what?
Like other, other places also just, you know, kind of teachers and being larger classrooms. Yeah, we're, yeah.
And that's where you get to like quality and equitable, right? Because we're really lucky because we typically pass levies. But, you know, Calipot has passed a levy for like, was it twenty years until last year, twenty five? So, you know, I mean, so the disparity in education in twelve miles is great. And that is where a lot of this, that comes back to the constitution and how the constitution is written for funding education. And so that's the, that's their, you know, that's where you can, but it's also you can, if you want, then they can, they will say that legislature could make votes and say, well, this is quality education. These kids just get more. This is, you know. So, but the equitable part is where it gets, that's where it's
Right. And where you're putting the burden of financing.
Burden back on the taxpayers in the community that you're living in. So I definitely, I was, I was wanted to hear what they had to say, mostly because I was really curious as to the timing of it. But the centennial happening, so I was just wondering why they were kind of starting this process now.
And I just, one other comment regarding that of horses, well known to teacher salaries and staff salaries that we're here, state of Montana compared to the rest of the country. And that's another apparent issue to address as well. We've made some gains in that area, didn't last live the same session, but I think there's certain
Especially considering cost of logistics. Where the salary doesn't cover the expenses.
Okay, we did a move on.
Yes.
All right. So we will move to B, which is the WHS expansion owners representative report.
Speaking of funding and bonds, we're gonna save later, update here. Good to see everybody. This is the November update to the high school expansion academic and athletic side. Things are progressing nicely moving forward. The design is progressing well, full steam ahead. So it's getting exciting as we get closer and closer to our targeted breaking ground days. The report you guys have, it's similar to the previous reports. Starting off at the budget, this is consistent with previous months. The only update is to the total spent to date, which is just under one point three million. That is as expected. So things are on track there. And some of this data will again infill as we get closer. The next section is the construction GCC and contract status. This also will update as we progress and get closer to breaking ground on the project. So that's consistent with previous updates. Jumping into schedule and current milestones. Some minor changes this time, that top section had some old data, so that dropped off and I, I infilled some current data. I think we talked about last time that we were doing some asbestos testing in the areas that are going to be demoed. As well as installing some pathways and infrastructure for prepping the work that'll occur in March. Those two things did occur, so those have been completed. And the other item of note for, for major milestones upcoming is that we are tracking, getting a helical peer test pile completed at the high school to give us some more data for structural foundations and some of the peers that need to occur at the, the new portion of work at the northwest area of the high school. Other than that, the two phases, the dates that we're tracking for key milestones have all stayed the same, so that is consistent with previous ones. No major changes there. And then jumping into the key monthly updates. Item number one, we've completed, or I say we, but A&E has really been spearheading the design, obviously. And they completed the hundred percent DD set for the athletic phase of work on, on October twenty second. So that they hit their milestone there and we are right in the middle of understanding the cost of that. Martella's put, put together a cost estimate on that and we're working through an exercise there to understand the, the budget versus the design. So that is progressing well. I did want to clarify that that hundred percent DD set is, the design is not complete. That DD means design development, so it's a step in the process of design. From here, we're right into CDs, which is construction documents. So that will go to fifty percent CDs, then a hundred, hundred percent CDs, which gets more detail and gets us ready for bidding and permitting and ultimately building off of. So the design is still being worked on. It's not, it says a hundred percent DD, but it's not actually a hundred percent complete. That's just a hundred percent DD. Item number two, Martella's completed the construction cost estimate for the academic phase, that hundred percent BD set of documents. And we went through a value engineering exercise to understand the impacts and how that can align with the budget. And we are at a place where we feel comfortable that the design does align with the budget. And that will continue to be refined to the design process. So that's a great milestone to achieve there. Item, item number three, last month, we talked about the Martell GMP contract amendment number one, which was for the bleachers and grandstands. It feels like we just did this, but now we have a contract amendment number two for a very similar scope for the stadium lighting. It's a design build scope that brings in the vendor and manufacturer. So an RFP went out for that. And we selected ESI to be the installing contractor for Musco Lighting. I think it's the next board agenda to approve that for a contract amendment to Marcel. And then there's another one that's not noted here, but for any design, there's a contract amendment to add some scopes to that. So that's another item that we'll talk about here in a minute. Item number four, we talked about above those minor asphalt pathways and infrastructure work did occur as well as the hazardous material for asbestos testing, just to get us ready ahead of, of spring break and breaking ground, just to be prepared for, for the work. And then the last item of note here is that we're tracking a community update for December third. That will be at the high school. The cafeteria has the previous ones have been for five thirty to six thirty. So it's an opportunity for the public to come and ask questions, get a design update from A&E and see where things are at. So I encourage everybody to go to that. The visuals this time, to be honest, they're not that exciting. We're, we haven't progressed or changed anything really from the rendering perspective. So the first photo is just a snapshot of the cover sheet for the hundred percent DD set on the athletic phase. And then the next visual is the phasing plan, the site logistics plan, which I think we've looked at, maybe it was a few months ago. This is a, a work in progress as we get closer and understand the design for their Martell. Put this together for where the work's going to occur, the impacts, looking at things like storage, movement, site safety and workflows for starts and finish times. So just snapped that there. I think it's very small, so I apologize for that. It's kind of fuzzy and you might not see those dates. But just a snapshot of that work in progress for the phasing plan. As we get closer, that will be more detailed and the communication will be presented in more phased approach detail as we, as we progress the work. So that is the November update. Any questions?
So let's say we're like starting in March, like demo and things are really gonna start happening. I just wasn't sure how we, has that been like broadcast to the general public other than have we put out any announcements or defend in any, I don't know, newsletters or anything? I just feel like maybe people aren't aware, like spring break is kind of like go time. So I suppose I just, I, I don't know, I possibly wasn't paying attention to the broader scope of what the public is hearing, so I'm also doing other things.
It's a good question. It's the consistent message of the date that we're tracking for starting. We talk about it in our community updates as far as a newsletter type correspondence. I don't know, Dave, do you know if that's gone out in any newsletters?
It's a, you know, a component of them, but it hasn't been a major emphasizing, I'll look back though, and, and let's, I think it's a great idea. Emphasize.
Yeah, we're kind of dovetailing on that. I think one of the biggest questions I get in the community, so I would love to have on the record and I can reference this meeting. Is the March twenty second historic date and how that impacts high school and most track specifically their access to the track for practices, not just the ability to have a meet. And I sort of talked to Dave about this, I said to him once, I'm not trying to surprise anybody, but it is a big concern.
Yeah.
There's like a hundred and fifty middle school kids that use the track every day.
Yes.
You know, that's just a lot of bodies and a lot of families and a lot of questions about, even if you delayed it one more week or one more week, you know, obviously some of that season's gonna get messed up, so to speak, for their routine, but later.
Definitely, a good, good question. And this phasing plan, if you could see the dates that are a little bit small up there, it would, it would show a little bit better. But it is phased differently between the academic side and the athletic side. So the colored boxes you're seeing that are around the whole athletic portion. Our date there is actually April thirteenth to close that area off and it is right after the last track meet that is here. And so we strategically did that to be the least impacted as possible to track. I think the practices after that date are in the works, Dave. I don't know if you have more detail on being at Columbia Falls or
How's that work in that area? In partnership possibly with Columbia Falls and
Okay, so yeah, I think there's still details, but as far as the construction work, we're trying to plan that for the least impact as possible, while also trying to achieve opening for that next tracks.
Thank you for explaining it on the record. Are there any other questions?
I just had a question on the lighting contracts. Are there very many? When the RFPs were sent out, was there much response?
Yeah, we, I think there were five responses if I remember correctly. And across the board, different vendors, we ESI with Musco Lighting was right in line with our budget that we were tracking for that scope. And would enable us to bring a team member on. There was a local electrical contractor as well as a, the preferred lighting vendor. So there was good response and competitive nature, all good components. The process, I think that is the next agenda, correct?
Yes. That's a good segue. Should we, any other questions or should we jump to that? All right, you can stay up.
Yep, couple more.
This is an expansion contract amendment.
Perfect. So, yes, this stadium lighting a component is a design built component that we are similar to the bleachers, trying to integrate into the design now. It brings on that team member that we can look at placement, foundations, things that the design team needs to work through and the contractor needs to work through. So bringing them on board now, similar to the bleachers, is a key component of getting things progressed through the design process. The total amount is two hundred ninety thousand, one, yeah, two hundred ninety thousand, one sixty nine. So that would be in addition to what we did last time for the bleacher scope. And just a side note, kind of the, we're tracking at least one more for the full scope, possibly two more to do some other early work. But just so you're not, you know, sidetracked by any future ones, there's no, nothing that we're tracking for like the next board agenda at this point. But these two are very specific design build scopes, the bleacher scope and this one to get them integrated into the design.
Is this, this is probably stupid, sorry, but does this include the scoreboard like that? Like, to me, it's all electric. That's a whole nother thing.
Totally different. Yep. This is specific to those big lights that you see that illuminate, yeah, the whole track and field area, just lights and everything else. There's other components that integrate with these, like data and conduits, things like that. So that's why it's important to get that looped in now, but this is, yeah, just stadium lighting.
And it says that, that total guaranteed maximum price will be about two ninety one, one sixty nine. So is there a possibility it'll come in lower?
Um, it could, it always can. This, yeah, this is for that scope, so this will add to the, to the previous scope. So the two ninety, one sixty nine is what we would be contracting Martell for to contract the bleacher stadium lighting or the stadium lighting. It's for the intended design as we currently understand it. If things were to change, either deductive or additive, then it wouldn't either go down or go up. Potentially.
But the guaranteed maximum.
For, yes, correct, for the current design. And so assuming that nothing changes, which we don't expect any changes, that's where it would sit and finalize that.
As far as I think, you know, chat or I don't know who ease of use to like change these light bulbs or maybe they're probably don't change that often because at the end of the day, they're not being utilized that much. But I'm just thinking like, did we look at that, only words, sourcing?
We did, yeah. And one of the design components that went into the RFP were LED lights. So that's, there's a lot of advantages to having LED lights as opposed to the older lights that you might be familiar with that take a while to fire up. And they also last longer. So that was one component of the design that we're looking at for, for what will be installed. But the other component is a local subcontractor that will be installing the work ESI through, with Musco Lighting, they're the vendor. But that was part of the selection and part of picking them. It was a key component.
Are there any other questions? Or other, is there any public comments on this item? It's the next item.
I think the next, yeah, okay. And then back to the board for a motion or further discussion.
Make a motion that we approve the item presented.
Okay, moved by Shannon and segmented by Darcy, all in favor? Everybody, okay, moving on to D, so you're gonna continue here. The WHS expansion A&E report.
Yes, and I am here, I believe Shane is with A&E is on the phone there. If there's any, I, I, I think what we're gonna go over here for this item is the contract amendment for A&E for some scope pads. I think that the broader design update is basically what I updated and then there's nothing really further on my side of things to update that design process. So with that in mind, there is, I think, also attached here a contract amendment for A&E to, for some design service ads that are specific to a couple of things. The first one is, and the majority of this is for deferred maintenance items that were not included in their original scope. Part of that was just understanding what exactly was going to be involved with those deferred maintenance items and what they were going to end up being. And as we've progressed through the process, they've gotten a full understanding of what we're trying to incorporate into this project. And so these are now being added to their scope from a design perspective for them and their engineers. We also are finalizing a kitchen food service scope. We had a placeholder for that, but it wasn't fully vetted for what the, the total amount was gonna be. The placeholder was thirty five thousand. It ended up being forty two thousand, nine hundred. So there's an add of seven thousand, nine hundred, which is a part of this. And then there's also a deduct for a placeholder that we had. I'm sure you remember at one point, we were trying to fast track the athletic portion and do that this summer. But for various reasons, we didn't end up doing that. And so the placeholder of thirty two thousand, four hundred and thirty is being credited back as a part of this. So the total add for a design, for a contract amendment to A&E is ninety thousand, six seventy for this scope of work. And that would be to integrate the, those design components that I mentioned before. And if Shane can hear us, I don't know if he has anything to add to that, but I know he was on the road, so if not, feel free, any questions that you guys have on that one?
I have a question, actually. Just the forty two nine seems like so much. Not to be naive, I mean, I know all this stuff costs a lot of money, but especially when we're already paying A&E, like I just don't understand why I have to pay another forty two to hold another company. I know kitchen stuff is very specific, but it seems like a lot of money.
For the food services.
Because it's just for the design, right? You're not paying, I mean.
Correct.
If you could explain to me what we get from forty two thousand dollars, that would be really helpful.
Yes, Shane, are you able to field that question better than I can?
Yeah, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, do you bet? Can everybody hear me okay? Standing on the top of Home Steak Pass, looking at the Northern Lights. The, um, so we suspected that there was gonna be some. Uh, some food service design, um, or some food design services necessary. As part of the project, but we weren't sure what that scope was when we started and done this endeavor. So we couldn't define it, we included a placeholder in our initial proposal. Um, cause we thought there was something there. I'm glad we provided something rather than nothing, so there's at least, there was some coverage there initially. As we defined it, really culinary arts, they're moving, moving out of their current space that's south of the current production kitchen. And then there's gonna be a little bit of space left over between that and some, the majority of that space is gonna be, um, gonna become. Um, changing rooms for the CTE. And the rest of it is gonna become a receiving area for culinary arts, so it is helping with. Um, the design of those systems, so likely to have a walk-in cooler there specific for them. And then culinary arts will move over into the new addition, and so it's selection and design of. The commercial systems associated with that, that commercial equipment. And then also both culinary, or excuse me, both, um, concession areas, so one being in the high school. Off the gym foyer, the other being associated with the, um, with the athletics concessions.
It's a very nuanced situation, apparently.
Specialty design for those components, that's why it's separate from A and E, um.
And multiple locations, that helps me understand, cause I thought it was just a, yeah, that it's also concessions. Um, so this is just something I just noticed, um, so in our attachments page nineteen of twenty nine. And it's the first page after the last bio of Ben Dallas, but it types up the agreement and it's. Between us and the facility, notice like this will district, the project located in Pindalee, Wyoming. Um, so I just wanna make sure we get them coming to the right location before we, so I never give them any money.
That is a good catch, I'm sure just a typo.
I'm sure they was probably wherever they just did a project, but I wanna make sure. Make sure we get them coming here.
Yes, yeah, Shane will note that, I'll show you where that is, we're looking at it on our screen, I don't know if you see it, um, but. You guys, we can, we can make sure that that's correct.
I did have one more question, if that's. Just about the mechanical, um, which is on page seven, just, this is, I think, deferred maintenance, is that right? Um, so, one of the things that has come up and we had the letter to us as well, um. About heating sources and that such things, and it mentions adding a boiler, um. If I'm interpreting that right, and I had thought that we actually had a, so if you could just explain the heating system decision.
Absolutely, yep, and I know, um, Shane, you'll probably do better than I will at this as well, but I'm gonna take a stab at it. Um, throughout the process, uh, there's been, we've been trying to understand what's existing, what components are working or not working, how to upgrade. Uh, make it really efficient, um, and the design team is taking, uh, an approach as to be as sustainable as possible and meet code. As best as possible, um, these, this one specific to the boiler is what is working, what needs to be upgraded for the additional space. Um, and how it integrates into what's existing as best as we can with the budget that we're working with. Um, so there's also that component of it, um, with where we've landed on it, there's been a lot of work in this deferred maintenance list. That Morrison merely has investigated where we're at with things and Shane, that's where you might be able to. Um, provide some added detail on this boiler component with Morrison merely, have you had discussions with them in detail on that one?
If he's not. Nope, I'm, I'm back, I'm back, yep, um. So there is a new boiler being added for the, to be able to serve the additional square feet of the addition. And then there are a handful of deferred maintenance items in that space, there's, uh. There's a pump that would either need some replacement or some work, there's a pressure tank issue, there's some glycol leaks. There's also a floor drain in, issue in there, and then I think there's one other item that. Uh, I can't recall off the top of my, top of my brain, I think there's five different items in that boiler room. And so these would all be associated with, now's really the time to do this work because you're adding on to the boiler system. Itself, and then to be able to calibrate, rebalance and do these other improvements at the same time, makes a lot of sense. These have been items that have been on Chad Smith's list, um, essentially since the last addition was. Was open and occupied, there've just been a few issues as he's been building that list over the years since.
And this, this would be adding that design into, so they have a lot of work to do from here to get to that final design, um. For what it actually ends up looking like in detail, um. And I know a lot of the discussion around the boilers is, is part of other letters and things like that, also something that the design team is working on. As far as formulating, uh, their responses in detail to all of those items to understand how and why and what the options are.
Any other questions? All right, is there any, uh, public comments, it's progress?
Yes, thank you, um. Yeah, my concern is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna do two minute timer, yeah.
Oh, thank you, yeah. Okay, great, um, yeah, my concern is threefold on this issue. And, uh, we just heard Shane say that a new boiler is being added. And the existing system has leaks, pressure tank issues, leak, uh, I already said leaks issue and drain, I mean, okay. I did a search for LEED, um. LEED is the Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. And if you do a search to compare heat pumps with gas boilers. Heat pumps are more efficient and envi- environmentally friendly, friendlier than gas boilers because they transfer heat. Instead of burning fuel, which can lead to lower energy bills and reduced carbon emissions. And there's a whole table of items, energy efficiency, heat pumps are highly efficient, can provide, provide three to four times more heat energy than. Electrical energy consumed boilers less efficient, they have an efficiency of around ninety percent. Environmental impact, heat pumps significantly lower carbon emissions, and of course, you know, gas. Uh, burning gas releases CO2. Um, operating cost, lower running cost, potentially saving up to seventy five percent on heating costs. Especially with solar panels and smart tariffs, we talked about potential for solar panels. Um, gas boilers, hi- higher running costs as natural guy, gas prices can fluctuate. Um, maintenance, heat pumps require less maintenance, filter cleaning is typically all that's needed. Is that it?
No, fifteen seconds.
Oh, thank you, so anyway, I'm also concerned about the heat, uh, the gas. Domestic water heaters, why not use heat pump water heaters, same arguments apply. Please, uh, think about not approving this, I just feel like we need to have another month and take another look, thank you so much.
Uh, okay, so are any other comments now? So we'll go back to the board for a further discussion or a motion.
So I guess Luke, what, like, if we were going to completely revamp everything and go from a different system to the plan that's being proposed and. Giving ballpark an idea of what kind of something like that would.
Um, I do know that, uh, cost is consideration with the existing facility to change the system that is currently there. So it's part of the response that A and E is working on and Morrison merely would dive into, uh, that evaluation and what makes the most sense. Um, this component of the design aspect is integrating, getting Morrison merely kicked off to have them, give them the ability to. Look at those systems and design it, however, makes the most sense for the project. So it's not saying that, uh, it absolutely will be an added boiler, it's saying that most likely that's a deferred maintenance item that needs to be addressed. From a design perspective and adding it to their design scope, so, uh, approving this document is just giving the ability to do those design services. Uh, into A and E scope for Morrison rarely. So that makes sense?
So could that be identified in the, um, group of process that, that needs to look out the side of?
It is already being worked on, yes, uh, they are evaluating what the most efficient, uh, system is and what the most, what works with our budget. Uh, from a cost perspective, um, the thoughtfulness of the lead service or the lead component and sustainability component is very important to the entire team. Um, so they're looking at that and they're also, uh, formulating a response to a lot of those items that have been talked about for a while, so. That analysis is in the works of, if it does make sense, it would be something that would be integrated into the project, and if not, the reasons why.
Okay, so there could be a head-to-head comparison. There should be. That we'd see before, even on.
Correct, yeah, and I don't wanna speak for Shane if he's still here, but that is what they do for all components of the building, not just MEP systems. They're looking at, at kind of head-to-head comparisons for what makes the most sense from a design perspective. Um, these, the technical aspect of the mechanical electrical plumbing gets into a lot of the sustainability aspects, so. Um, those are the ones that are, yeah, a head-to-head comparison is what they're formulating for response to. There's a letter and a lot of topics like the boiler that's been brought up, yes.
I think, I think that, I mean, I think in general, it's the architect's job is to try to find the best and most efficient and.
Design, isn't it, realistic? As contractor, you know, like, design. Looks pretty, um, that's why we have this C O G C process.
Yes, the, the Martell's involved from a cost perspective, and sometimes we would love to have systems that are very, very efficient. But they're also very expensive and cost prohibitive for the budget that we're working with. Um, so we have to evaluate those things on a case by case and, uh, make the best decision for the project in the district. Um, but the full teams involved, Martell from a GCCM perspective, uh, the design team, not just A and E from an architectural perspective. But the MEP designers that are the experts at these things.
That's kind of the point of this, right, so that we can get all the experts at the table.
Correct, it's adding that to go into their design services, correct.
But voting yes doesn't mean that we don't end up with the.
No, not necessarily, correct.
Is that everyone, yeah, everyone down there? All I know is my parents' heat pump doesn't work when it's less than minus forty degrees out. Mine's twenty, yours is minus twenty, uh, yeah, so anyways, but is there any further discussion or question? Okay, moved by Quincy, also seconded by Darcy, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks Shane, enjoy the rest of your drive, be safe. Northern lights are out, that's what I'm hearing. I just got a texter out here. We are moving on to item E, which is, uh, me. Um, so this is a superintendent retirement, um, and so we are in considering. The retirement resignation of Mr. Me as of, as the superintendent white schools effective two and thirtieth, twenty twenty six. There's a letter attached as well, that's very nice, um, are there any clarifying?
Yeah, we don't approve this, you can't.
Absolutely. Is there any public comments on this? Back to the board for further discussion or emotion.
I just wanted to say, before we approve this, or don't approve it. That, um, it was an honor to be the chair when you became superintendent. And I wanted to acknowledge that Dave did not apply to be the superintendent. He was the special services director and, um. The board went through the entire search process with the committee, all of us did, and at the last minute, our hire fell through. And it was like too late to do it all over, and we knew that Dave was really respected by the people in his department. And had done great things for the district, we called him in to this room and said, please will you do it just for a year? You know, the, the district needed a stabilizing force at that time, and, uh. She didn't hesitate, he said, he didn't even call his wife. That if that's what you need, sure, I'll do it, and he really brought. A very stabilizing force to our district and also a massive kindness and a culture of collaboration that I think. We're all better off for, and I wanted to mention that we asked you to do it for a year. But five years later, here we all are, and I think that we're all stronger and better as people and as a district because of your leadership. And I wanted to mention a few things that, um, we all appreciate, so we grew in size, we have more students, we have more faculty. We have more staff under your leadership, we navigated COVID together, which was not easy. But she were a very stabilizing, calm, collective force throughout all of that. Passed the high school sponsorship bond for more space for athletics, activities and academics. Um, increased our academic offerings and services, also it's important to know over the last five years, our academic outcomes. Across the district at all levels and in all subjects have improved, I mean, that's not a small, not a small feat. And we've had new curriculum adoption, but overall, I think that the legacy that will stick with me. And I think all of us is the culture of kindness that you have really created. I think that we're all excited for your next chapter, but also very good.
I told everyone, Dave, you need to watch the prime minister, I don't know, yeah, I think he has a lot in common.
That would really kind of get to, to share those thoughts, can I share a piece of?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I just really wanna say, um. People say this a lot, but it truly has been an honor, certainly, so there is no question in my mind, um. Being a part of this amazing, like, this district community, and when I say community, I mean, community, that means to everybody. All and helping this school district. It's been truly an honor and I'm proud to be a part of, um, deeply grateful. Uh, for this continued focus on educational excellence, it's just ever, it exists in every part of this community. Everyone's focused on supporting each student's growth and success, this is our staff, administrators, the press needs. And the greater community. Great, really, this could be a part of that. I'm confident that the district will continue to thrive, for sure, no question. Thanks to this ongoing collaborative work and this commitment to outstanding education. From everyone involved in this great district. So, I look forward though, finishing this, we're strong, working with all of you, working with this community.
Okay, I will enter.
Can you think you should take, cause you're the first chair.
It's just a terrible feeling.
But, of course, we support you, Dave, so we will move to.
I'll second you.
Okay, that is moved by Katie and seconded by Shannon, all grudgingly in favor.
Congratulations, Dave. Yes, I think your family will be very happy to have you back.
One year from now, you'll be watching the Northern Lights. Okay, so now we'll move on to F, um, which is the next step, which is a superintendent search committee. Moving right along, okay, bye now, yeah, uh, the board chair B will appoint committee members to select the superintendent search firm. Um, and I've already reached out on this, and so, um, I've talked to Shannon and Katie and myself. Um, Sarah Crum and Lucy Shay, and we will start the process of. Working for our firm. Yeah, and I've never done it before, so I'm.
Okay, and I did it last time too, Shannon and I were both on the committee last time, so timeline wise. And I did it last time too, Shannon and I were both on the committee last time, so timeline wise, what happens now is the committee. Will meet and then we will select search firms that will interview. And then we will bring that recommendation to the board, so the committee is not at all those people who will pick. We just pick the group that helps us conduct the search and then.
We pick the candidates that come to play.
Make recommendations, so then we'll review and before even all that happens, the search firm typically gets input from administrators. From faculty, from staff, from community members, from board members, so that they know what we're looking for. And then based on that, they post the posting. That specifically asks what this community is seeking and then start reviewing the applications. And then when we get it down to the people that will interview, it'll probably be rounds of interviews, so that there will.
Yeah, last time we had six that came in, they they provided a video. And the committee reviewed those videos and chose three from that.
Yes, so there'll be lots of opportunities for input along the way and the search committee is just pretty much in charge of picking. The first, but then will guide all of us through the process. So everybody get excited.
Yeah, are there any other questions on that? Okay, so we will move on to G, which is the first of our recommendations for hire with Mister Me.
So you have um substitutes are listed there for recommendation for hire and then on the. You have to attach that as well, you can see we have some recommendations for hire in front of you. Administration, we've gone through our human resources process and administration reference approval for the meltdown school secretary. W M S special. Our educator and elementary long term third grade teacher.
Is that like a long term sub or what's a long term teacher?
He is a long term.
Okay, thanks.
Are there um any clarifying sessions on it?
I'm sorry. It just brought to mind, I always try to touch base on this question, do we have enough pairs? Mr. White, how are we staffed during this?
Right now, we're down, I think, one or two.
In in a minute when you say.
One or two, maybe on that, right now.
Any other clarifying? Uh is there any public comments on this file? Okay, back to the board for further discussion or emotion.
Wait for a best presentation.
Second, moved by Darcy and seconded by Quincy, all in favor? Now, how many are?
Well, it appears that there will be new postings.
Now we will move into reports, um and we moved it, so the administrator report is first, I crown.
For the northern lights. Okay, um NOLA is my topic, good evening, last year Mister Brown and I agreed that I would take on a market administrative role. At the independent high school, so this is was to establish dedicated point person for addressing and planning the future of the independent school. I was happy to accept this opportunity and I'm enthusiastic about what it involves. As we grow and expand during the next couple of years, our goal is to look at programs that align well with the independent high school. That being said, Al Hamel, Dave Perisso and I went to look at some competency based education conferences. And Lisa Bloom started looking at some of those professional learning opportunities for us and found one in New Orleans. Um so we went to the full symposium conference. So the NOLA conference confirmed that our district is ahead of the curve compared to most Montana schools. It was empowering to be surrounded by like minded professionals and to interact with experienced educators and leaders from around the nation. I appreciate knowing our independent high school program is part of a greater community outside of the Flathead Valley. We are moving in the right direction with a clear focus on the future. Key topics covered in the conference were A I, competency competency based education and project learning based. Um learn, all of which are informing our work. A significant area of focus for the district is now applying our graduate profile to our class offerings. And we saw this at work in other schools in the nation and how they were applying this and also using the community to help further the student learning. Competency based education, C B E, emerged as a key topic demonstrating demonstrating its potential to shift focus. From steep time to actual mastery. This approach can yield significant benefits, including cost and time savings. Partnering with our community while simultaneously better preparing students for the finance of the modern job market. Furthermore, focusing on a school's durable skills, which is what we're doing with the graduate profile, academic knowledge, communication, critical thinker. Ethical, adaptable and responsible can effectively lead to successful job place placements for these graduates. The conference also addressed grading, noting that major colleges and universities are increasingly accepting. And often valuing C B E transcripts on par with the traditional ones. The conference divided or provided Dave, Al and myself a valuable opportunity to deeply discuss. Each session and examine successful practices implemented by other other schools that we saw. We were incredibly appreciative of the time and the experience, the takeaways were so good for us and by the. But the ability to discuss and plan during the conference was rewarding and beneficial for all of us.
Thanks for going to Trady.
What a cool place to go.
Yeah, I think it's really cool though, three of the best, like that's so much better than just one. So hard to beat a one.
Okay, moving on to B, which is our trustee uh announcements. Um and it was October, so it meant we did our school visits and so would anyone like to share their highlights or impressions?
Well, I always love going to school and I did really miss it last year, so thank you to the administrators for uh going along this experiment with us. So we can realize that we made a mistake and let us forget it because, one, it's great to connect with each of you, individually and spend some time with you. Uh not in this format, uh but it's also just always good to be in the classroom or in in a school that's with the kids. And my biggest takeaway was how well behaved these students are, I mean, like. They're so, I couldn't believe it, they're quiet and they're working diligently and they're not like disruptive and you weren't seeing any crazy or chaos. Even we were at the high school during lunch and so it's like, I don't know, maybe three hundred kids out there and. Overall, until like maybe the last five minutes, as Mister Brown pointed out, they know when their interval clocks, like it's time to get moving, but. It was, they were so well behaved and so quiet and just, it was amazing to me and so I think it speaks to how. What we're teaching them about affect and also just the kids in our district and how our staff treats them with respect and then they get their respect back to. All of our staff members, so that was my big takeaway.
Anyone else?
I was also impressed with the relationship aspect, like I really love getting to go with John because. All the elementary kids think he's a celebrity. It's like Mister Quinn, Mister Quinn, it's fun to be in your entourage. It's fun to see you guys walk into a classroom and the classroom be so receptive to you, whether it was. I got to see the uh infamous secret gym upstairs, right? Like this getting to be in the schools is always energizing and a nice reminder of why we spend our nights here. I did not get to go to the um high school because the times didn't work, but. Sarah, I heard that you killed it at career club and that everyone wants to be in international relations now. Well, you're bringing people from the community into the schools to educate the kids and kind of making all these connections and it was just, I thought invigorating. So thanks to all for doing what you do.
I would echo the community part, that's definitely something as someone who started on the board in, I guess, twenty twenty one. You know, coming out of the dark days and then not having a school visit for your commit, it just feels so different in each school, it feels so much more open. There's just that sense of um flow and yes, there's safety measures always, which is beautiful and also needed and. Yes, for bonds to pass those as well, you know, and grateful for all the safety, but it still doesn't feel unwelcoming because of that, which is. And they are very structured and not chaotic, but it doesn't feel cold, exactly, it feels very just safe. Yeah, like you can, it's beautiful and I really appreciate actually it's for Brown taking the time to walk Randy and I and explaining the construction because I'm such a. So that was a really great window of opportunity for me specific to the high school to say, oh yeah, that's where like the independent high school is gonna blow out this wall, like that makes so much sense. And just the flow gets me really excited for all these architectural reports to come.
And I just thought it was really generous of schools to take time away from all the things they were doing. And I've decided I'm going back to fourth grade. Things they were learning about, I am sure I had not learned about fourth grade, probably it's true in sixth, I'm thinking, but. But that one, if these look like something I can.
I was also really impressed by the artwork. You know, in every school.
And that did remind me, so fourth grade, we did, we walked into a classroom during reading and I was like. I'm so glad I'm no longer in elementary school, this is really hard. I can't remember what they were learning about, but some medieval time and I was like, this is unbelievable, so it just, it really brought home the curriculum that was great. And but also how the curriculum is adding in the social studies aspect of things and so it's just so well rounded. Even though it seemed daunting, I mean, the kids really seemed to be enjoying it and.
Yes, it was high level stuff like fourth grade was doing Greek, yeah, Greek goddess. And it was also neat to see how it's happening in every classroom down the hallway.
Yeah, so that part was really, uh it was fun to see that in action and just be one of those, and I would ask this student, I was like, can I look at your book? And she let me look at it and I was like, take it back. No, uh so it was fun.
And the classroom, Quincy and I went into, they were um answering questions that their teacher presented and. It was so much about medieval pines and serbs versus swords, who was about to eat what? Who was the boss?
Yeah, it's crazy, yeah, no, it's very great program, so it's good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you and I, similar as always, you know, I have tons of memories in those schools and I knew the opportunity was there because I ran through it. You know, and Mister Drown taught me in seventh or eighth grade Sims class and so I think it is just like, it is this consistently welcoming place and. I get the sense that I think I had even when I was a kid, um and I think those traditions continue to carry, so I appreciate it very much. We had to watch a puberty video at a third year. So that's my. So, okay, so now we are moving into the upcoming policy committee meeting on policy seventeen. Who would like to?
Um, okay, so at our work session, when we talked about seventeen hundred and there were some questions about seventeen hundred. We felt like, okay, now we have a H R person, well, we rolled in, so I don't have to recap it, but anyways, from that. The policy committee thought maybe it would be a good idea to check out seventeen hundred and see if there was language in there that kind of followed the direction that we talked about in our meeting. So we're gonna meet with um Deborah and talk about, if it's possible, right now it says. It says, you know, first go and talk to the person that you have an issue with and then you can, then you may file a formal complaint. But we were like, we need something between those two, so we thought maybe we could put, then you may consult H R. And or you may file a complaint, so it just gives that extra step of being able to meet with somebody and saying. Would this work, would this not work, so anyways, Sarah and Dave and the policy committee and the legal advisors, maybe Lucy too. I don't know, we're gonna meet and. I don't know, I don't know what, but anyways, that's our goal there, it's just to ask questions and get answers to the questions that came up in that. Work session, I think.
And we'll move on to, you'll see a um message of gratitude attached. We can't, friends.
But we can say.
I would just say, I feel like there's apostrophes in. The foundation of our student successes, it like should be over to the.
Yeah, I think it's a spacey, just the way it's based in terms of the way uh came over.
I think it's the way it came over.
Yeah, okay, so it's like, honey's on the real one, that's right, Amy usually. So when do we want it sent?
When do we usually send these?
The week of Thanksgiving.
Or is that connected with yours, Dave?
Yeah, usually we coordinate it, I didn't want to.
Go ahead, you, go ahead, work it whenever.
I mean, we could send it next week and then. Yeah, or yeah, we could send it to Monday Thanksgiving or we could send it at like the twentieth and eighth of July, it's on the twenty, weekend of twenty fourth, I don't care. We just like, yeah, we just send the trend spaced out.
Okay, the twentieth and the twenty four. And no other chain.
Well, my name is Solor. The two teams? I know. And imagine they got oxygen, right?
I didn't have Randy on there at all, but I thought. Randy just cut off completely, so that was why I didn't. We only can, Amy make the changes.
Okay, yeah.
Right.
I think it was a nice message.
It is lovely, yes, thank you, I really like the ring. It's great.
Thank you.
Yes.
So we can move on to.
I wanna talk about himself a little bit, uh you think about himself, um first of all, I'll say this, that one of the things that I've. Volunteered, been volunteered to do is to blow the horn for M T S B A a little bit more, one of the things that was sort of apparent to himself is that there's a lot of. Fall off, like. And and we we determined that they just, they really don't define what they do and they don't, um you know, they don't, so a lot of work trusty. And as many, many people on the board will know, I'm probably one of the bigger critics of M T S B A, so it's natural that I would be. So, but I wanna talk a little bit about himself and I'll start at the end of the of the conference. Um because I thought this was particularly badass, um there was a a gentleman that spoke, uh a native American gentleman. Um and and first of all, the um to say that the end end note was subdued compared to the beginning would be a complete. It was very well put, but it but it after, I'll talk about it in a minute, the opening keynote, which was amazing. Uh but he, one of the things that he said that I that I thought was really cool was he um. He challenged everybody, he said, how many people in this room could quote your um mission vision values? And like nobody, like nobody could, you know, the whole thing, but but the one that that struck me is that he he taught or teaches still, but. In Hayes Lodge Pole um district and I really liked their mission, it's not their mission anymore, but it's, I will walk anywhere in fear of nothing. But oh my God, that is, that is pretty bad. But it was indicative of the of what he was talking about, sort of the the warrior spirit. We also had the road show, um we talked a little bit earlier about the interim committee. That their job is to go back to the legislature and recommend, make recommendations about the state of education. That this, the dice have been. Um there they they've been putting on a road show going around state and they came to themselves and it wasn't anything like what I would have expected that it was. It was really cool and it was very well put, very well put together and very well done, um but it was. It's different than than what I would expect and uh and I don't know how they're going to with what they presented, I'm sure they have a a path in mind. These are very intelligent people, uh it's very, seem to be very well put together, how they're going to craft that into. What education looks like in the future, but I I trust that they're going to do that. Um, and then there are, as was mentioned earlier, they're on a very sort of compressed timeline to get this done. Um, and it, you know, get it done for the recommend recommendation back to the interim committee. Um, the opening, uh, so the Mcel overall was. Usually when I go to Mcel, I have to choose for the four sessions that are there today. I have to really sort of sometimes roll the dice and it's like, I want to go to this one and I want to go to this. There was never that point. So it's really fallen off in in the number, sort of the scope of things that they're presenting. There were clearly those that were more gay. And there were clearly those that were more me, like more trusting, where you know, as before, there were some that were, you would be in a room with totally super deadness and. You know, there were a super few super tense in in a few of them, but they were, they were more clearly defined as far as this is the, this is something that the trustees would want. Um, and then this is something the super general want. So, but I did go to all four sessions and. Um, but the opening uh keynote was was pretty inspiring and um. This guy started a uh, the day of David Clark, he started a school in New York that. Teachers go to and it's a. Do not only do they teach kids, they teach teachers and they're just going with it. Just their their approach education was pretty refreshing. They're very much a charter school. And I thought it was interesting that he he said that and I I think this is by design there, one third special ed, one third um. Full of, you know, free reduced lunch, one third, just sort of people that don't fall in that group uh that that are in the school. And that's by design. That's how they, how they do it. Uh, but he, his speech, oh, and Dave talked a little bit about it at the other meeting, one percent. Things, they're just some of the innovative things that they've done. He's worth looking at. Um, I was telling Dave, I looked up a little bit. And his speaking fees are not public, but there's been some people of it's leaked. He gets up to a hundred grand just speaking. And I don't know if he's worth a hundred grand, but and I I hope he is speaking, but that's what he, what he has had charted. He was pretty fantastic and um, just some of the stuff he has a a book out that's probably worth reading, so. So a- as we go forward, I will be bringing you guys uh and announcements of trainings that are available. I'll be better about that. There's one coming up that um I seen, but I couldn't find enough information on it to bring it to you tonight. So. Yeah, I may email you guys and just let you know, because this this one would be a training where he would be all the like. A lot of their trainings anymore are. That's all I know.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have one shout out. It's the Whitefish Schools Book Club. It was so cool. The um, Montana One Read, I think I mentioned last time, was Becoming Little Shell by Chris Latre. And so he came and did a community lecture at F V C C and he gave a shout out to all the local book clubs and he was like, I'm the Whitefish School District. Is having a book study about this book, which was really neat. And then, of course, there were people from the book study that were there that night and so. Earlier, I talked about how people from the community are coming into our schools, but also people from our schools are getting out to the community and representing. Whitefish, I think in a in a cool way. So thank you for having those cool professional development opportunities.
That was a teacher actually that volunteered to do that.
It's really cool. And they meet regularly and talk about book and the Indian education for all of them, how to integrate these ideas into their classroom and then circle back on how it went. So it's not just a one time thing either. It's like a throughout the year study. It's really cool.
And then and she, there will be copies of the book in the library, so if you you want to check one out.
Any other announcements or shout outs? All right, we'll move on to Superintendent Bean's report.
Um, upcoming meetings, events and important dates. Of course, that was covered again earlier pretty thoroughly. And with the districts and upcoming activities and events as well, it's very challenging as well. So that was nicely done. But I will touch on, uh, we did talk about some important dates, most phasey plans, more information will keep coming up about that as we go through this process. As W uh, or A and E and others present to us, you know, some more information about that. Again, uh, the high school is, you know, working closely with some partners and developing some plans related to track, but there's a lot of others. Some conversations going on based on well, the building itself, so uh, more information will be coming forward about that soon. Um, the middle school is also developing some plans as well. I wanted to talk about um, school surveys a little bit. I've been, I'll be meeting with Deborah Sook again tomorrow. We had preliminary conversations about, she has all the previous surveys that we've done. She's continuing to look at those. And trying to put them together and she has some ideas about putting at least two together and then so having. Two different survey windows, survey times, potentially um, some bases she's throwing out there are January and. Archer people, potentially because of um, how they were done last year and then aligning them. With when we get data regarding data, but academics. So try and prepare yourself for next year with all of that data so that when you're looking at your action plans. Since or as soon as it comes together. So those are some kind of conceptual ideas that are being thrown around, nothing formal yet whatsoever. We'll bring more information to you in a further upcoming work session or be. Um, of dates on the governance calendar, we're getting starting on that. We're doing a little bit of tweaking based on that, the feedback we received on that. Hopefully we'll have that ready for a conversation in the December. So you can see enrollment trends there. Um, first of all, I can start with just the the general enrollment page we have there. We have. All the information related to enrollment and you can see our enrollment number is the same as in October.
That's, that's never happened.
Exactly. Yeah, the exact same number, although we've had fluctuations, so you see. Uh, there has been some fluctuations of people moving in and moving out. We also are down back preschool students in our enrollment, so. Things that have changed a little bit, but you can see our overall numbers, overall total was the same. Enrollment overall from two thousand fourteen through two thousand twenty six, though, on this next slide. Our next link, you can see um, our twelve year now, we, you know, we. Tracking a ten year previously in some of our communications, this was our twelve year enrollment. You can see a one point eight one percent rate over that time, so really close to that two percent rejected. But the high school approach rate is at two point eight two percent, she can see over that same period of time. So again, that trend is still going up upward as we. Um, and then we have resignations here. Um, see the. Hold on playground supervisor. Any questions about any of that?
So when you're talking with Deborah about surveys.
Yeah.
Remember last year we were like, we don't want to get too many surveys that one time.
Yeah.
I think we should also anticipate that there will probably be a superintendent, like, who, what are you looking for a survey?
I know. She, we talked about.
Okay, great.
Uh, briefly.
Okay.
So, yeah, you're right, but.
Yeah, so you know, like plan it all out, so that it's not all that one. And I also wonder, I wonder if. One survey can serve both. Like what are your perceptions and what are you looking for in there? I don't know. So that we avoid the survey fatigue that we create.
The initial one, I think she. I can recall, I I have to go back to my, the initial one.
Okay.
So I don't know what that aligns with, in my.
I don't know.
But, oh, thank you for, uh.
Yeah.
I'll have some discussions with her.
Totally makes sense that she would also be on top of that, because she's worked, you know, of most of those.
Yeah. I was just gonna comment on the enrollment. Am I looking at this right? Because I I just, gosh, it just seems like such a giant jump. But from like fourth grade up to fifth grade, does it really go from one fourteen to one fifty one?
Yes.
Oh, my God. Okay. I was like, is that right? But then I thought, I must be looking at that wrong. I know middle school gets slammed, but that is something.
Yep.
Okay. More Josh.
And you know what we've seen. You know, it's it's accurate, yeah. Sometimes have those differences. Grade levels, things like that, but what we have seen here, that pattern in the whole school and high school. Uh, we do enrollment, not just that.
Well, part of it is that that one party.
It's exceptionally low, yeah, because I, yeah, like if you look back to twenty four, twenty five, it was like one fifty two, you know, one sixty, like there's, you know, ten fifty. That's a huge.
One fifty one is actually lower.
Yeah, it's kind of a. Which is like twenty twenty, which is kindergarten is a twenty twenty-ish, right? That's what it is. Any other question? All right, we'll move on to the director business.
Thank you. So in front of you is uh, our monthly update for the last day of October. Uh, you may notice that we have quite a few funds where uh, our cash balance has dipped below zero. And that is because uh, we are waiting for our tax revenues to come in November. And we're also waiting for grant reimbursements from O P R. So this is the time of the year where we usually see the dip. Uh, but uh, we'll see more income next month. Uh, as far as spending goes, uh, there are no red flags. Uh, everything is where it should be for this time of the year, uh, both for um. Operational expenses as well as federal and state grants. And as Luke Hammond mentioned before, uh, uh, the expenses or spending to date on on the construction project. Uh, have have been variable so far. Any, any questions?
Thank you.
Can I just ask a general question? Steve and I were talking about too, is we're here, you can hear upstairs. Has the PAC been rented out?
There's no, less. So I think uh, the greatest. Uh, the greatest was revenue was uh, the loss of life insurance.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, uh, we have since replaced that revenue income with a different church, however. Uh, the revenue from the churches is high.
They don't have us members.
So when you look at uh, page one cash balance for Fund One Seventy Two. You can see that the cash balances is further down the red. Uh, we started the year with about thirty two thousand dollars in the red and went down to. And I think that's partial. Uh, would you like to end up the round pick?
Historically, that was always kind of, yeah, bit down.
Unfortunately, I'll be. Uh, we've been uh subsidizing it from the general.
Well, you know, I was gonna say, it seems like there's been more use from schools. Which I think is we need to see.
Yeah, great. It's getting used. It's not a cash.
It's just not a cash.
Yeah, that's right.
Cookies and water punch.
Okay. Any other, any questions from you? We're good. Thank you. We're moving on to D, which is the consent agenda. Uh, is there any clarifying questions on? There any, any public comments on the consent? Back to the board for further discussion or abortion.
A little bit approved second.
Moved by Katie and second by Darcy, all in favor? With one last.
The adjourned.
Second.
And it's moved by Darcy, second by Pincie, all in favor?